It is six o'clock and we will call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We have, I believe, two Commissioners that are joining us tonight via Teams. So I see Commissioner O'Quinn, and do we have a voice or something from Commissioner Rofalski?
Here.
So, he's not in. He said he may be a little bit late joining in tonight. So just wanted to make the public aware of that. If you will, stand with me as we, I will give the invocation and Commissioner Tosterson will lead us in the pledge. Father, we just come to you tonight grateful that we serve you. We thank you, Father, for all that you do for us. We thank you for this beautiful country in which we live. We thank you for the Golden Isles and its beauty. Father, we also thank you for our military servicemen and women, and remember still again today those that laid down their lives for our country. We also thank you for our brave men and women in our public safety with the police and our fire protection. We thank you for the job they do for us every day. We pray that you would just guide us through this meeting tonight. We pray that we lift you up. Remember that you are Almighty God and that we will praise your name. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Do you remain standing for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer a couple of changes to the agenda. I'd like to pull item number 20 and number 28 for discussion.
All right, sir. I have a motion from Commissioner Brunson to pull items 20 and 28 from our agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Pull those items from the consent agenda so we can discuss. No, no, it's just to amend you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I've just been given this note. I move to add item 9.1 to the published agenda to authorize the chairman to sign and approve the current amendment and all future amendments to the Merchant Services Agreement with First Data. Ameris and Ed, or remove locations for credit card processing.
We have a motion to add item 9.1 to our agenda by Commissioner Brunson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Tonight we'll have a public hearing on, I'm sorry, give me just a second. Our public hearing to discuss the FY '22 budget. This is a report and Mr. Tamara Munson will give that report.
Good evening, Commissioners. We discussed the FY '22 budget in a work session a few weeks ago, and so that was at the May 11th work session. There have been a few updates and changes to the proposed budget since then, which I have detailed out in the attachment to the agenda tonight. The overall budget has not changed very much. We've had an increase in revenues and expenditures in the general fund by $78,000, a change in revenue source in the Drug Court Fund, which had no net effect, and an addition in the Capital Projects Funds of $264,000 for an air conditioning system for IT, and we are requesting to use fund balance. So those are the changes since the original budget was presented to you on May 11th. This is a public hearing that's required by law, and I'm here and available for any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, are there any questions that you might have concerning the budget at this time? This is a public hearing for the purpose of the budget, and public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should afford being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated, and your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Are there any citizen comments tonight regarding our budget? Obviously, everyone in the county thinks we've done an excellent job.
I agree with all of them. So the budget will be adopted at the next meeting, June 17th. We just have to have a public hearing before that adoption.
Okay, and this is that public?
This is the public hearing. So this will be the last discussion on the budget, and then the adoption will just be a resolution to adopt the budget as presented. If there are any more changes, I will notify you. I don't anticipate any more changes other than what's been provided tonight.
All right, and this being a public hearing, if there are no comments, we will close the public hearing process in this matter. Commissioners, are there any comments?
Just want to thank Tamara and the staff for all the good work. It's gone pretty smoothly, which, being back on the commission, first time for the budget, it's great to have that good work. You've done a great job. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve consent agenda, general business and consent of general finance, with the exception of any item that a commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda items under general business and finance. We have pulled items 20 and 28 already, so those will be coming forward for discussion. Are there any other items that any Commissioner would wish to pull? All right, then, we have a motion and a second on the floor already. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. So, item number 20, is adopt a resolution to amend the FY 2021 budget with Ms. Munson. Would you come explain?
Good evening, Commissioners. We presented this at the Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, and there was an error noted between then and now, so I just wanted to bring attention to that. We had listed the Glen Haven purchase of the park as approved in executive session, but it was actually approved in an open meeting on May 11th. I have updated the support documentation to reflect that change for posterity's sake.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Munson, and thank you for correcting that error. Are there, is there any discussion regarding this?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution to amend the FY 2021 budget.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Brunson, a second by Commissioner Booker to adopt the resolution to amend the FY 2021 budget. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number 28, award the bid for the Frederica Road realignment project at Christ Church to underground excavating of Patterson, Georgia, the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $1,670,794, with $1,614,724 being self-funded by Christ Church Frederica through a memorandum of agreement to provide funding and $56,070 provided by the Capital Projects Fund, fund balance, and increase the FY '21 Capital Projects Fund revenue and expenditure budgets in the amount of $56,070 each contingent upon the closing and finalization of the property exchanged with Christ Church and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Austin is here.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, there's been a lot of talk and a little bit of jabber about this in the community, so we have the team, the design team, that here, and I'd like to call them up, especially Jeremy Marquez has done an outstanding job putting this all together for Christ Church. The county has been, its participation to date has been basically in an overwatch position to review the design, and we think they've done a great job. So he's put together some slides to just give you a quick update on the project and to give you some timelines on, there were some questions about permits and that kind of stuff, and he's got a slide on that. And then him and his team are open to answer questions.
And if you would, give your name for the record, please.
Of course. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Jeremy Marquez with Marcus Lattimer in Hallback, 34 Cordova Street, St. Augustine. Appreciate y'all letting us join you with me. I also have Mr. Mike Demel. You want to introduce yourself and give address?
Yes, appreciate your time this evening. Mike Demel with Environmental Services, a TerraCon company. We've served as the environmental consulting firm, cultural wetlands on this project since its inception in 18.
So if I could, I'll just briefly go through the project. I know that we've spoken with many of you, many in the community, and we appreciate the support with me. I have a number of folks from Christ Church who are also here, I think, to show their support and thanks for our community and for you all supporting this project. The overview that you see on the map ahead is really showing where the existing Frederica Road is, more on the southern and westerly portion, and where the revised alignment comes in that does a number of items. The first is that it improves the Stevens Road intersection, bring into a 90-degree orientation. It also eliminates this blind curve around Old Monument. It improves the approach to Fort Frederica, and also allows for off-street versus on-street parking for the parish. So this is a slide that you all might remember from going through this process, because we've had public meetings in 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, then of course this year on the project. And really, it's about the safety, as I just outlined, creating improvements in terms of the connections, but it's also about the cultural resources and helping to better protect a number of them, whether that's the Wesley Oak or the historic church grounds. This accomplishes both. There are a number of permits that we needed to go through, and the one that I particularly wanted to make sure that we spent just a few minutes on, I'll ask Mike Demel to do this, is to go through the environmental permitting that this project has required. So, Mike.
Well, thanks again for your time. As I said at the beginning, we've been involved at the very, from the very beginning of this project, and effectively, our job is to collect data about the project as it relates to wetlands and cultural resources and protected species and so on and so forth. So when we collect that data, we plug that data into boxes that ultimately go to different either state or federal agencies, and you go through the permitting process across the board. So as of today, we got our final permit today from the Corps of Engineers for the use of a Regional Permit 34, which provides us a last link for this project to proceed with regard to permits. So I know, leading up to this meeting this evening, there were some questions whether or not all permits were in hand, whether or not we went through the process, and ultimately, we've gone through the process, and on the 3rd of June here today, I got the permit from the Corps. So there's a lot more detail, and I could delve into any details that you guys want, but with that said, I think that might be sufficient at this point.
The other permits that we did need to get had to do with county permits, certainly. We had work with Joint Water and Sewer. We had the need to work with Army Corps, as well as going through the State Reserve Preservation Office, as well as there's a portion that is on Fort Frederica property, so we also had to go through their NEPA process as well as getting a special use permit. So all those permits are in hand, and we're certainly happy to attest to that. Just a comment that had come up is going through and taking out this wonderful live oak canopy. We are very protective of that live oak canopy, and so I always call this my spaghetti model. It kind of reminds me of, you know, hurricane model, but this was a variety of alignments, and again, I think that the commission, many of you have already seen this, where we were looking at how we could thread the needle. There are a number of failing pine trees that we were intentionally aiming for so that we could avoid the oak trees, and we came in here and really showed where the largest oak trees are, and you can see how we were looking to essentially, again, thread the needle in avoiding those oak trees. Some of the items that we're doing are root pruning, as well as structural pruning of the trees, and we even have underlayment that will help to protect the roots even with the road construction, and we're also doing directional boring where we need to take water and sewer so that we don't need to take out the roots. So we are being very protective of the canopy along there. As I mentioned, there is a number of historical and cultural resources that we're also able to better protect through this. We're certainly looking to maintain the protection of the Wesley Garden, which is on the north side, as well as the Wesley Oak and Christ Church Cemetery and the lawn itself, which is currently along the existing Frederica Road. It also addresses a number of safety and stormwater improvements, so we are going to have better transmission of the stormwater from the west to the east side. Jonathan Roberts with Robert Civil Engineering is also here with us if there are any questions about those pieces. And then, as I already mentioned, this eliminates the need for folks to park along that roadway, and especially elderly and young families that, at the church, we've been cognizant of for some time, that we're not going to have that same vehicular pedestrian conflict that we currently have. But again, that's just a high-level overview. We are here to get into as much detail as you would like to get into, and I just thoroughly appreciate all of the commitment that this board has continued to show to this project, and so thank you. But we're here for any questions.
Mr. Austin, do you have comments that you want to make before we turn it over to the Commissioners?
No, sir. We've added a motion slide today because we weren't sure about the acquisition of all required permits, and I don't know if we've reviewed that final permit and, or Aaron has reviewed that final permit, so we added the acquisition of all required permits to the motion today.
Now, Mr. Austin, suffice it to say that there's not going to be a shovel of dirt moved out there until all the permits have been verified or in place, and we're legally ready to move forward.
Absolutely, sir.
And would you be so kind as to review our permit process? I thought I heard two different things there. Are all the permits in place? I missed what you said came to date. Did the Corps permit, is it now in place or not?
It is in place. I, the wetland bank that we had to use ended up shifting, and so when I last had spoken with some of you, I clarified the fact that we were having to go through that switch, but that has now been taken care of, and permit is in hand with Mike and his team to make sure that everything is in order. We also received the special use permit, which was driven by the NEPA process on the fort property, and that is fully executed and returned as of today.
Okay. Are there other outstanding permits?
No, sir.
No outstanding permits?
No, sir.
But proof of that would be obviously submitted to the county?
Correct.
To start this project underway. Any questions?
I had a question. There was a lawn item in there for $25,000 for irrigation. What was that? What's that for?
So we are adding 21 new oak trees along the roadway, and so I think that that's part of, again, the commitment of the churches. We want to protect the current canopy, but also plant the next generation.
Okay.
Could you speak to the fact that the new roadway will not have any drainage, flooding issues, because where it's scheduled to go, as I understand it, is elevation-wise is lower than where the current roadway is. Is that correct?
I'm going to have our civil engineer, Mr. Roberts, answer that, but we have taken great care to make sure that we have adequate drainage across that roadway. So, Jonathan.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm Jonathan Roberts, and like Jeremy said, the, uh, the drainage was a key consideration in the design of this project, and we've got new culverts and new inlets, and, uh, fully expect it to, to operate much better than it does in its current condition. Uh, that's been vetted by the county staff, and I'll concur that the drainage is adequately designed.
And is that going to, you know, there's been the issue of flooding, that is what you're addressing with this, that, that the drainage will be improved from where it is today and some of the past flooding issues, that's why?
That, that is correct, and some of the existing drains have, uh, been inadequate and, and, uh, really, uh, that there's a, there's a wetland system near the existing roadway that has backed up several times, so, uh, this design i- intends to, to correct some of those deficiencies.
And then the encroachment into the wetlands, uh, has been another question that's been brought to us. Uh, we are doing, it, would you go through the wetland mitigation, uh, and the credits again, so the public be sure to understand?
Yes, I'll turn that over to Mike.
Yes, sir. The, um, the general process is, um, Jonathan's group put together a set of site plans that is overlaid onto that data that I was referring to earlier. Some of that data are where do the wetlands and where does the salt marsh exist? So the salt marsh has been completely avoided, um, with regard to the design, and then, uh, where needed, we've encroached into Corps of Engineers wetlands, which are freshwater forested wetlands. So the permit that I referenced earlier, that I've got here in front of me, allows for the permanent impact of .73 acres of Corps of Engineers wetlands. So part of our ability to fill those wetlands, you have to compensate for that, and that compensation comes in the form of buying mitigation credits from a mitigation bank. And the mitigation bank is simply an entity that has worked, uh, with the Corps previously, is allowed to commercially sell credits, uh, to me, or to, to the county and to the church to offset that impact to .73 acres of, of permanent wetland impact. So, um, part of the permit condition that I referenced earlier, of this permit that I referenced earlier, is we acquire 4.2, 4.24 wetland mitigation credits from a bank. We've defined what that bank is. They've got adequate credits. The Corps has checked off on that. Now it's a function of, you know, paying, paying those as a condition to this permit. So what I didn't reference earlier, and what I'll explain here, is I, I got this document today, so I'm going to go through a QAQC process to make sure that it meets what we asked for, which it appears to. Um, so my next step will then be to share it with the team, for them to do the same thing, and, and then it'll come, come to, um, you know, the county attorney or whomever wants to vet it out locally, Dave and others, um, and then, then we get thumbs up, you go on and purchase the mitigation credits, and, and we're ready to start moving dirt. So there's a little bit more detail. Hopefully that's helpful.
Okay. Um, one of the things that I wanted to talk about, uh, tonight, if, if, if I may, uh, is, is the Stevens Road realignment, uh, that, that portion of the cost that, that the county is addressing. It's our only investment in this project as far as dollars go.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make sure that we've got that clear for the public to understand.
Yes, sir. So the Stevens Road, uh, uh, project, uh, that's the piece that the county, just to improve that intersection, uh, the county, uh, at the commission decided that that was the piece. The original estimate, uh, was $50,000. We thought it was going to be $50,000. Uh, the, and so we, when we bid it out, we bid that out as a separate line item, so we'd exactly, we know exactly how much that cost. It came in at 50, for this particular bid, came in at $56,000. So we believe the county ought to pay that $56,000 in honor there, there were to do the Stevens Road piece.
All right, sir. Are, are there any questions regarding that?
Well, just, just so that we're clear for the public, if we decided not to do Stevens Road, we would have no monetary investment in this road alignment whatsoever. Is that correct?
Uh, correct, but there would be some redesign involved in what we got already, but yes, yes, no monetary. There is some labor. I mean, we, we will, the-
Understand.
Public works will be out there and inspecting the construction of the road, so there's some labor.
But, but the $56,000, my point is totally county project Stevens Road, doesn't have anything to do with the church and what the church is trying to do.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Attorney, um, are there any legal questions, uh, still outstanding as it would pertain to this particular project?
Mr. Chairman, yes, there, there are. There's, um, you know, simultaneously, along with the, the bid, um, there's a property exchange agreement with the church that is, uh, that was the county entered into in July of 2020. Um, that, um, that exchange agreement has the county conveying to the church, uh, property where the road and monument, uh, road is currently located, in exchange for property, um, where the current, the new road will go. Um, the agreement also requires the church to pay the full amount at closing, so before the first penny or dollar spent, or is given to the contractor, we will have funds in hand in advance. So that, that has to happen before the bid, bid goes forward. That's part of your proposed motion. Um, it also requires them to have all permits in place, uh, there are safeguards in place to make sure that, uh, everything's done in advance of the bid going forward, um, while the, the, um, project is being built out. Once it moves to that stage, um, the existing roads will stay in use, and that will not stop being used until the new road is in place and ready to accept traffic.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, uh, any other questions regarding this?
Yeah, I want to make a comment. Um, I think Commissioner Booker and I may be the only two that were here at Genesis in the beginning, and, um, it has been a, I guess, a four-year, four-year process. I supported the project then, I support it, uh, now, and I'll support it as it goes forward for one reason and one reason only, and that's public safety. I, I, I'm not supporting this to enhance the value of Christ Church. I, I don't think they're going to flip this property anytime soon and sell it to, to a condominium development, um, but it, it's purely for public safety, and it's not only public safety for the parishioners that go there, but for those of us that occasionally, uh, or more than occasionally attend, attend funerals there, weddings, and, and also there's the tourist component, the tour buses that stop there. Uh, that bend in the road there may have been adequate for a horse and buggy, but it's not adequate for a Corvette. And, uh, so I, I, I believe that this is absolutely appropriate. I think it's a collaboration as, uh, Commissioner, uh, Fendig said this morning on the radio, uh, between the private sector, if you will, if you call the church private sector, and the public sector, and it's a win-win for, for everybody. Uh, the fact that we are going to have management of a new county road is, in my opinion, is absolutely appropriate. It's our road, and we should have oversight in the way that it's built. And so that investment of our time and, and, uh, from public works, I think is ab- absolutely appropriate. Um, with, you know, that having been said, I, I think that we can move forward. Um, I'll defer to the county attorney, but I think this, this motion is probably appropriate, that the one that we've got on the board up here because of the, uh, the vetting of the, um, Corps of Engineer permit and, and, and those sorts of things. And the other thing is, th- this curve in the road down there is not going to get any safer, uh, as every, another house is built up there, the safety factor becomes more, you know, w- worse. And so, um, with that having been said, I'm going to shut up and let another commissioner read all that mess up there on the board.
Before we entertain the motion?
One final fault before we read the motion. I'd, I would echo, uh, Commissioner Brunson's, um, statement that this is really a public safety issue. I live out in West Point. I've, I've traveled that road every day, uh, for 20 some odd years. Uh, the fact is, there are still additional homes that will be built up out at West Point. We have West, West Point Plantation, which has up to, I believe, 300 more lots to be developed over the next several years or, uh, multiple years. So the, the, the traffic that is going to be on that road going forward is going to continue to increase. There are a number of sweeping curves, uh, throughout, uh, from West Point all the way to Stevens Road, and the opportunity now to, to straighten out a couple of those curves and make it so that, that drivers can see clearly down the road, uh, folks that are, aren't trying to cross the street, uh, in, blinded, uh, from oncoming traffic is eliminated. So I really feel like I, I, I'm supporting this for the public safety issue and, and the fact that it, we're going to see a significant amount of cars, uh, on that road traveling as the, as we go forward in the future.
Mr. Chairman, one other cool points to make out is that if there are any cost overruns, that, those cost overruns, those change orders will be borne by the church. That will not be a kind of expense for, you know, the, the realignment part of the project. Uh, right now, we're also, um, advertising four weeks in a row for the proposed exchange. Uh, we're, uh, tomorrow will be the third week of the four weeks, uh, in a row for that, um, and the exchange agreement does have the property exchanging property of equal value, uh, with the church. So it's, it's a one-for-one equal value. Those properties have been appraised, uh, those appraisals have been approved by the county commission back in July of 2020, or when it was approved in 2020.
All right, sir. Thank you, sir. And at this point, uh, unless there's any, any other discussion, I think we can entertain a motion.
Well, you know, I got to say something.
Yeah, I did.
Well, this property is near and dear to the heart of everybody, especially to me. Uh, my family's back there since the 1800s, uh, I'll, I'll join them one day. But a couple of things, I want to applaud the partnership, this process. I sat in a lot of the first meetings back in 2017. It is a safety issue. Uh, Commissioner O'Quinn does drive through there, and I, I know he sees the number of, uh, large motor coach buses that are pulling in there regularly, and, um, I'm certainly pulling in there regularly, uh, every day with my trolleys and vehicles. Uh, there are two other trolley companies that pull in there every day. There are also a multitude of visitors that come because normally the church is open, which is a very nice thing that the members do, and provide that because that's historic. As far as I know, that's the only church in America where four sitting presidents have visited a public service. Not a, I'm not talking about where the presidents get together for, you get together, but, uh, we've got a lot, a lot of history in there, um, but it is a lot of traffic in there. I would say probably maybe even more or equal to the lighthouse. It's our most visited landmark destination on St. Simon's, and it's just a lot of traffic. And then you add on church services, you add on church events, you, uh, do a lot of stuff there, and then you add on funerals that are going on, uh, in that, in that, uh, church property over there. It's a very busy place, and this is a, a great safety move, fair and equal. We appreciate all the work that y'all have done. And I do a lot of, in the businesses I've had, I, I do a lot with agencies, federal agencies and permitting, and to get all the permits that you've had to get is a slow, long, uh, process, and, uh, especially to get anything out of a National Park Service, and, uh, much less Corps of Engineers. So it's, takes a lot of hard work and good partnership on everybody's part to get it there, so, good job. I'm really happy about it. Okay. All right, uh, let's see. I move that the Board of Commissioners award the bid for the Frederica realignment project at Christ Church to underground excavating of Patterson, Georgia. The lowest response bidder in the amount of, let's see, I didn't bring the long glasses on there, so it's 1.0. Was that 9? Okay, 1.70. Okay. I got, you're going to have to blow that thing up a little bit. Bring that thing up a little bit. I dashed in from my fishing trip and, uh, grabbed the wrong pair of glasses. There we go.
All right, so.
All right.
Start over.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners award the bid for the Frederica Road Alignment Project at Christ Church to underground excavating of Patterson, Georgia. The lowest responsible bidder in the amount of 1.670794 million dollars, with 1.614724 being self-funded by Christ Church Frederica through a memorandum of agreement to provide funding and $56,070 provided by the capital funds project, capital projects fund, fund balance, and increase the FY21 capital projects fund revenue and expenditure budgets in the amount of $56,070 each, contingent upon the closing and finalization of the property exchange, receipt of funding from Christ Church, and the acquisition of all required permits. Thank you.
That is, that is quite a motion, and, uh, so that is a motion by, uh, Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Brunson. Any other discussion on this? And I see that we've been joined by Commissioner Rofalsky. I don't know how much of all this discussion he got, but, uh, hopefully a lot of it. But we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your right hand. And that is unanimous.
Thank you. That's, that's a long line of hard work y'all have done to get all those permits. That was great. Great job.
All right, and, and we thank you very much. Okay. Uh, that will conclude our regular business session. We do have an executive session for tonight. Um, I need a motion to go into executive session for the prop, uh, purpose of personnel.
I make a motion to go into executive sessions.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Booker, to go into executive session for personnel. This meeting stands recessed.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Tosterson to come out of executive session. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the executive session minutes from May 20th, 2021, May 21st, 2021, May 24th, 2021, and May 25th, 2021, executive sessions.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Booker for the minutes of four dates. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
I move that the Board of Commissioners release the name of Jacques Baptiste as the finalist candidate for the position of Glen County Police Chief.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Booker and a second by Commissioner O'Quinn to name Jacques Baptiste as the finalist for police chief. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Anything else to come before the commission tonight? Seeing none, hearing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Have a motion by Commissioner Booker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fendig to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Raise your right hand. We are adjourned.